Well, it is 3:00 PM and today is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. And this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And welcome everybody on this Tuesday. I know it's an off Tuesday for us, so really appreciate the extra time that counselors have taken, as well as staff to be here today. And those in the public appreciate your presence as well. We have one item on our work session agenda today. And we will probably jump right into that item, which is our, the preliminary plan that was submitted by our city manager for the police preliminary plan. So I'm going to turn it over to our city manager to get us kicked off.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. Good to see you. In your work session packet on page eight, there is a spreadsheet that you've seen before. It's the same spreadsheet that was sent to you back in March when you went through the OIR and the CPRB recommendations. If you recall, we just didn't quite make it through to the preliminary plan during that special work session. So that's our task today. I can share my screen and we can walk through these one by one unless you have a different approach that you want to take. Chief Liston is also joining me and you should feel free to ask him questions about any of these items or other issues that come up in the course of our discussion. As a reminder, this was, this preliminary plan was presented to you back in December. Chief Liston started in January, so it's something that he inherited upon starting here and did not have a hand in crafting as well. So he may have some, some other thoughts along the way. And I've encouraged him to chime in if he has anything to add. Any questions before we get started or can I share a screen and jump right in? Okay. Take a look at this. So again, this has not been updated since March. So in some cases, the, the status may be a little different and I'll point that out along the way. Recommendation one dealt with the local option sales tax and considering that to boost our aid to agencies grant program. Certainly back in December, I did not anticipate the federal relief funds and with the American Rescue Plan funds that are coming our way. I, I would not think that this is probably the best time to take up a local option sales tax and that we should be focused on using those rescue plans to the best of our ability. And certainly we'll be looking very hard at how to support our social service infrastructure here in Iowa City. So that's probably the biggest change right off the bat is, is the, the impact of that rescue plan on the local option sales tax. So my recommendation now would be to shelve this item for at least, at least another year, if not longer, while we work through the ARPA funds.
I wonder if Council wanted to kind of go item by item and just give some thoughts. Cause I personally think what you just mentioned about this, just holding off on the loss discussion. I, I think that's appropriate.
I agree.
Yeah, I'll keep moving and if I'm going too fast at any time, I can't, I can't see everybody's, can't keep track of everybody's head nod. So if I'm moving too fast, just let me know. Number two is the partnership that's already underway with the shelter house for the street outreach worker. So again, this is a part of the police department budget being shifted over. Actually, I take that back. We, the council took this out of the police department budget, my apologies. So this is actually in our neighborhood and development services operation now. But essentially the city is funding partially a position at shelter house for street outreach and engagement. My understanding is this position has been hired and they're doing internal orientation at the time. So Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I spoke with the shelter house today. It has been filled, it was filled in early March and we have already met with their person. They made an internal hire. So we are in contact with them and we've got some plans coming up to, to do some joint operations with them. So it's, it's working so far.
Okay, nothing further needed from Council on that one. Moving on, the budget that you approved back in January that takes effect in July does have a new halftime position for a civilian outreach assistant. This position as designed right now would target outreach and engagement with our growing immigrant and refugee population. And it would be our goal to hire from within this pop, that same population to increase or, or build capacity in our relationship with our immigrant refugee population. So we have not posted this position. That's something that we would normally do in the coming weeks in anticipation of those funds being available in July. And before we post that position, just want to make sure that the council is, is comfortable with us making that commitment. Obviously if we're hiring staff, that's a long-term commitment that we're prepared to make from a financial standpoint. But operationally, we want to make sure you're comfortable as well.
What is the name of the position again?
Community Outreach Assistant.
And is that a full-time job or part-time?
It's, it's budgeted at a halftime, so 20 hours per week.
But I think, and this 20 hour is, is like a set of our, like three days a week? Or what it is like, how you, or every day but less hour?
Yeah, I think we have some flexibility to structure that how we want. I think Chief would probably have to talk with his other outreach staff and see where those hours are, are best needed. It, it may not be daytime hours either. It could be evening weekend hours when, when we could do more effective outreach.
Yeah, yeah, because if you want the candidate to be from the immigrant and refugees, you have to keep in mind although all, most of them are low income people. And if they're going to have a job, at least if they're going to have part-time job, that's not enough for them. They have to look for another job. So you have to keep in mind, if it's part-time, the person could have two jobs. So it'd have to be like really three days a week so they can have another days for another hour or weekend, as you said, and evening, you know, just give them a chance to do something else with their job because it's not going to be enough for them. Or otherwise make it for time, I don't know, if needed. Or unless you want to do by communities, do you want like, are you thinking of hiring, is it two positions or just one position?
Just one position to start and we thought we would see, see how it goes. And then eventually increase hours and, and over time ideally, you know, build that outreach staff. That it's a civilian position, so, so build that outreach staff over time.
Okay, sounds good. I guess those might listen.
I think it'd be helpful, Chief, before we go out with this position and maybe Mayor Protem, you can help us with this. But you can help us connect with, with the immigrant and refugee population to understand what, what hours may be best to target and what types of skillsets, be it language skills or otherwise, may be desired as we, as we go through the recruitment process.
I would love to do that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move, we'll move forward with getting that position posted. Number four is shown at white in the top of the screen. This is taking an active role in marketing local crisis services, including the mobile crisis unit. The mobile crisis unit is back on the mobile status now. They were doing telehealth throughout most of COVID, but they are back on the streets, so to speak. And we have started in a, in a very small way promoting those services. And we expect to do more after the public safety communications position is hired in another month or two.
Well, do you envision this sort of also coordinating in terms of outreach with, with the Guiding Center or the? And, and what role is the new community director going to have in it? Cause she clearly has a lot of experience.
Right, well, I think, I think there's definitely a tie-in with Guiding Link, particularly as Guiding Link looks to open up to the public. If you recall, right now it's just open for law enforcement referrals. But later this summer, they will begin to open up to public as well. So there's definitely some promotion that'll need to happen around that. We can assist with it. And you know, we look forward to working with, with community and excited to work with Sarah and her new capacity. She certainly brings a lot of expertise to that position and they'll have to be very close cooperation and planning. Obviously this is promoting somebody else's services. So we just have to make sure they're very comfortable with the messaging and the timing and that, and that it really ties in well with, with their current marketing strategy.
Jeff, do you know that all of mobile crisis is located at Guiding Link now? Is that the only place that they're housed and dispatched from?
I am not 100% sure on that, Laura, that's my understanding, but I'm not sure, Chief, you know?
That's my same understanding. I, I'm not sure if it's 100% out of there, but they are out of there at least partially.
Okay, thank you.
And Jeff, how will this, how do you envision this to align with the 911? If we continue with the 911 dispatch system? If calls to 911 would be better served by this mobile crisis unit?
Yeah, so you know, I think there's a whole nother level of, of marketing and communication once that takes place. And remember, there's also a national three-digit suicide hotline number that's in the works as well. So at various stages, we'll have different marketing objectives. Right now, I think a lot of it is just awareness, making sure the public is aware that this service is out there, how to access it, when it's appropriate to access it versus dialing 911 for emergency assistance, those sorts of things. As it, as we move hopefully towards integration into 911, that, that messaging can, can change a little bit from, from, you know, you don't have to promote the, the phone number as much and that sort of thing. It's more just making the community aware that this is part of our emergency response system if we get to that point. So I think we continue to promote, but it's just slightly different angle on that messaging.
Counselor Burgess, it is 100% out of guiding now, just to follow up on that.
And then Counselor Taylor's question really is, is tied in with number five. And that's really, really working with community and other local governments on, on evaluating the expansion of, of mobile, of mobile crisis. It's a fantastic resource and we're so fortunate that we have it already established here in Johnson County. But, but clearly in order to get the response times that, that, that we would seek with something that's integrated into the 911 system, we would need to look at expanding that. And as we market it, more people become aware, we'll need to make sure that we have, we're, we're supporting that capacity for community to, to respond. So this is a number five and, and number six are, those are big, big undertakings. And we can lead a little bit of staff, but we'll need counsel as well to, to work with your elected peers. And we'll have to see what, what the other governments are interested in, in pursuing. A few of you, I think Counselor Mims and Weiner, you, you serve on the JEC board. We'll need you to have some of those conversations at that level. So just like Guiding Link was, was multiple years in the, in the making. That's probably what we're looking at with, with number five in the vicinity.
Yeah, it'd be really good if we can along, along the way in the not-too-distant future, put together talking points on it, specific, specific information so that we can, we have the ability to get it on the agenda, start to talk about sort of just, start the conversation on, at JEC, for example. Where, how else would the conversation take place among, among staff of different entities largely as well as electives? Or how do you envision that?
Well, I know the mobile crisis team has already been given this a lot of thought. I know in the last several months, they've been studying mobile crisis units from across the country and looking at how they scaled up their operations. So they, they have some good ideas on, on how they, how they think the service can grow here in Johnson County. Becky Reedus and team have sat down and, and talked with me about that a couple of times over the last few months. So I think the first thing is to, is to make sure that we understand how community as the operator of this service really sees how this can grow and how it can be sustainable within their operation. And then it's exploring that model or a couple of maybe viable models with the other government agencies and, and seeing what resources are needed to, to back those. I mean, we're going to be, probably going to be talking about a lot of staff. They rely heavily on kind of non-full-time staff right now in different capacities. They're on-call quite a bit. You're really looking at a large investment in staff so that they are more reliant on full-time positions and less on-call so that we can limit turnover in positions. We'll have to really look at pay and benefit levels associated there. And of course, that's, that's a lot of resources that community doesn't have and won't expect to get. And so they'll be looking to the local governments to really fund that expansion. And then on top of labor, you're going to have vehicles, equipment to integrate into 911. So that's radio systems and dispatch systems, things of that nature that we're going to have to consider.
I think when we do start having these conversations because of community's long-term experience now with mobile crisis, a mobile crisis team might want to include some other entities that might be interested in being at the table when these discussions occur. For instance, the East Central Region, that's who is really responsible for the mental health portion of our community. And I think that they would be interested in being at the table. G L alternatives would be interested at being at the table as well. Because anytime we can do, you know, really help someone with their mental health and divert from, and you know, inappropriate, inappropriate interactions. I think that would be good. And so I think having all these people at some point at the table would be great to get their input as well.
I agree, that's, that's very much the model that the, the county followed with the Guiding Link Center is, is bring everybody together. And I think we saw that can work really well. So if, if I'm here in general agreement on, on five or then six, I think probably my next step is to circle back with the community folks and, and get a good understanding on where they sit now. Obviously with the transition in, in executive directors there, it may take some time for Sarah to evaluate that operation and, and, and give that some thought herself. But I think we'll be able to start to make some process on that this summer. And then for, for Counselors Mims and Weiner, I think we can just plant some seeds at the JEC level and, and get those other communities and the staff at JEC thinking on what this could look like, even though that's a step much further down the road. Okay, on to number seven here. This is really looking, taking a good, hard look at the community service officer position that we have and really studying the types of calls for service they're responding to. And, and then looking at also the other calls for service that they're, they're currently not responding to, whether that's because of differences in work hours or just kind of business as usual, but, but calls that may be able to be diverted to them should they, you know, receive the proper training and, and supplemental staffing and anything else that may be needed. But if you're not familiar with our community service officer for the, for the folks in the, that are watching this work session, those are civilian positions often noticed by the white pickup truck that they drive. So they're often doing a myriad of, of activities for the police department. But it's been a while since we did a really comprehensive review of that position and, and really gave, gave a lot of thought to what else they could be doing should they have the, should they have the, the time and capacity and training to do so.
I, I certainly think since we have some people in those roles, get their thoughts on what else they could be doing. And, and doing a comprehensive review would be appropriate if it's been a while.
I, I would agree. It, it does seem to be something that police departments are looking at now in terms of expanding, you know, the community service component of their operations and reducing the number of sworn officers, if that's possible. So yeah, it does seem like this is an opportune time to consider how to, how to expand their, their role within the department.
I think based on the statistics that you provided, Jeff, they, and I don't know if it was 2019 or what year, but it looked like they were hitting about 6% of calls for service. I saw 4,400 out of the 72,000-ish, if that seems right. So it seems like there's a few different ways we could go about trying to expand that role, which I'm, I mean, I, I really do think having unarmed officers is a high priority. And we identified that even in, you know, the resolution when we were talking about making this plan. So whether it's a certain percentage of calls as sort of a benchmark or categories or, you know, however creative we can be with it. I do think that it seems likely with what I understand of staffing shortages that maybe the folks who are already doing those roles might have different ideas than, than the sworn officers as to which functions could be shifted over. So maybe just making sure we're prioritizing volume on that, I think would be great.
I agree with Counselors Burgess and Thomas on that. And I think now is, is a really opportune time. It's kind of staggering the numbers we're seeing of the decrease in our sworn officers. But this, this I would think would be an opportune time that we could kind of look at all the jobs that all of them do. And perhaps more of our budget could be diverted towards these community service officers. And I'm, I'm just thinking of, off the top of my head, I've seen a number of actually armed officers that are responding to motor vehicle accidents. And I would think that that might be something, but I'd like to hear from the ones that are in this position now if that could be something that could be added to their duties also, that we would not need an officer that's, that's carrying a lethal weapon.
The issues with those are through the state, in order to investigate accidents, issue citations, you, you have to be a sworn officer. So we do have some issues with that. And we certainly are constantly looking at ways we can increase the calls that they, they go to. We have sent them to, we try to send them to any training that we can through the ILAA. We've currently sent them to crime scene training, so they can assist with that. So there are, any opportunity we can that we're legally, that we can legally allow them to handle situations, we certainly are amenable to that.
That, that's an interesting point. I'd also at some point be interested in learning more about what, how we're constrained by what we're, what state law constraints are in terms of what we can do with, with unarmed personnel and what we cannot.
Yeah, a good piece of that review that we could include in there. Put those kind of, here's the guardrails and then here's where we see it. One thing I just want to make sure the council knows, you know, for those existing positions that we have, they're, they're operating at, at full capacity right now. So this isn't a, a situation in which we can work with current personnel to expand that volume. This is more defining what this role should become. And then over time, providing those resources to, to grow that, grow that role, which likely means more hours, more, more personnel, more vehicles, that sort of thing.
I, I do want to just make mention about staffing patterns would be, I think, something we need to consider from a big picture point of view, where we have sworn officers, we have certainly these community individuals a part of that. We, we're partnering with other entities. I don't know if that will be in our scheduling, our staffing patterns. But to look at this globally, I think would be good so that we can identify what all, what all we do have and what pieces might be missing and what pieces we want to shift around.
Okay. Number eight is the automated traffic enforcement. And this is one that we noted that at some point, we're going to need some council direction on this, whether you want us to proceed or not. And then if you do want us to proceed, the type of enforcement that you're looking for us to, to pursue or, or at least what data you would find useful in helping to, helping you to make that decision. There was discussion at the state level again about a ban this year. While the session's not over, it does not appear that a ban on automated traffic enforcement is, is going to make it through. But it, it has been on the table each of the last, at least probably four, if not five plus years.
Well, I've often, as you, you know, in our conversations we've had over this particular item, I've tried to expand it beyond the use of the, the cameras, the automated traffic enforcement technologies to look at it more broadly in terms of, you know, how do we address issues of community wellbeing and safety in as broad a sense as we can when it, when it relates to traffic enforcement? You know, there were several aspects to this that we, we have identified. One, one we've made some progress on and that it's trying to reduce the number of traffic stops for minor infractions. I think that's an important piece. But moving forward from that, you know, the, the question of how do we engineer our streets to promote traffic safety, I think is an important component. And, you know, in looking at this and considering it, I've also tried to step back and ask, you know, what, what are in general the, the goals that we're trying to achieve with traffic enforcement? And in a couple of them that I, I've identified would be reducing the calls for service by a sworn officer, whether in response to a public request or it be officer initiated. And the second would be that how can we make it easier for people to comply with our laws? You know, we have a number of laws, as I've tried to emphasize, related say to speed, where we've designed our roads to, in, in effect induce breaking those laws. So that, that has put both our, our public in terms of its driving behavior as well as our police officers in a very awkward situation in that we have, you know, individuals driving at speeds that our road designs are telling them to drive at when in fact they're well over our speed limits. And then we have the question of our police officers engaging in the enforcement of those illegal speeds. So my hope is we can, we can certainly re-engineer our streets. I think we need, perhaps need to do a better job educating the public in terms of the concerns and, and impacts of driving at illegal speeds. You know, in terms of if we're trying to promote biking and greater pedestrian activity, that interface can be a very dangerous one if we don't address speeds. I do believe cameras have a role to play in this. I, you know, from the readings that I have, I have done, they have improved traffic safety where they've been employed. I, I would just simply at this point like to carry on that kind of. I I would just simply at this point like to carry on that conversation with staff and and the chief to see in what role they could play. You know, looking especially at how we make decisions about where they would be deployed, how they would be, you know, the citation fines would be addressed. A whole range of issues, making sure that should we deploy them, that we address the potential issues that have arisen, and I think been identified with respect to equity and fairness. So I I would like to have that conversation. Again, I think it should be part of this larger framework that we're looking in within. But personally, I would like to see the cameras as well as some of these other initiatives that I've been describing.
Counselor Thomas and I have had some extensive conversations on this that I would would agree with. Essentially, we've been pursuing one one public policy approach with respect to traffic, which is sort of the, you know, get them through the city fast, which is not necessarily the best way to keep people within the speed limit or keep kids safe or anything else. So there need to, I think there need to be a number of different, number of different approaches to switching our public policy standpoint. And that this can be a piece of it and the and and potentially some of the funding from it can also go to changing the what the streetscape looks like, what and how and how some of these streets look. It says, for example, when 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 Mormon Trek was switched to that when they did the road diet of Mormon Trek, I admit I was relatively skeptical, but I thought didn't didn't have a didn't take a part in that. I'm going to see how it works. And at least from my perspective as someone who lives near there, it works just fine. And 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 not having more than one lane in each direction for that portion of Mormon Trek does end up having people not travel as quickly, I believe. So I mean, I think it's just one piece. I would, I too would like to to continue the discussion in a larger framework.
I was wondering about the call volumes for traffic. So I think the statistics that we know is that traffic related incidents are like twenty five percent of calls for service. And overall, in terms of the breakdown of calls for service between public initiated and officer initiated, the officer initiated is around forty five or just over forty five percent. So are most of the traffic citations officer initiated? I think that's what that's what the data we have shows us, right?
Yeah, most of the citations are officer initiated. There are several that are results of of collisions. One thing in we'll be going over this, I suppose, in the next couple of months as the traffic study and the amount of citations that the department as a whole writes comparatively to the number of stops it makes is relatively low. So it's it's not an enforcement focused department on, but they do they do make a significant number of traffic stops. You can see that was cut in half last year, more than cut in half. Several reasons, but predominantly because of COVID and then the fewer vehicles on the roadway.
When we talk about overall traffic safety, I think I I just want to kind of be able to drill down on what how much of it is sworn officers out patrolling initiating stops that then are reflected as calls for service versus you know, other other incidents and that kind of thing. And so again, we have the breakdown as to public initiated versus officer initiated. We know most of it is officer initiated, but I'm also trying to tie this into what the mayor was saying about staffing patterns and staffing overall. We're down officers and we're having trouble potentially recruiting officers. It seems to me that policy choices about how we're doing the level of officer initiated activity is should be part of that conversation. Like, can we choose in terms of the patterns and the patterns of staffing? Can't we choose to do less of that to focus on the more, I guess, what I consider sort of value added? Also, non enforcement positions that that we're talking about not being able to staff like the downtown liaison, those specialty things.
Sure. One thing to consider is the majority of our traffic stops occur at nighttime. And you can imagine the reason for those stops are are OWI stops looking for OWIs. So and I I believe that's why we have the low number of citations, because I think we do have a focus. We do have a drinking culture in Iowa City. And we do, those are things that we need to pay attention to. The number of OWIs we arrested last year versus in two thousand nineteen is less than half, which corresponds with the fewer number of vehicles on the road and the traffic stop. So I do want to just remind you that our our traffic stops, especially since December, when we implemented the secondary stop policy, they're not for secondary reasons. They're for primary reasons, public safety reasons, and many of those are to in in looking for places where we've found OWIs.
Yeah. Chief, I wondered if I could just ask briefly, even even if this is like non sequitur, how how the non the secondary stop, the policy that we were piloting has gone?
Yeah, we're taking a look. The the deadline was, we we extended it until April thirtieth to take a look at it. And the issue still remains that we're really not comparing apples to apples. Because we implemented that policy during COVID. And as I mentioned, the traffic stop numbers in two thousand twenty were half of that in two thousand nineteen. It's hard to attribute how much of that to attribute to the traffic stop, the secondary stop policy, and how much to attribute to just lower traffic numbers. So my suggestion would be to give that more time. But if you're asking for personal opinion, I think the officers have adjusted to it well. So I think we're still, it was written in a manner that we're still able to perform our public safety mission. So but I I do think going forward, we need to give it time to be able to compare apples to apples and I know one of the city managers concerned, and I shared it, was just its impact on OWIs. And as I mentioned, last year, the OWIs arrests were down almost half. So but again, do we attribute that to COVID? Or do we attribute that to the secondary traffic stop? And that that policy was only implemented at the very end of two thousand twenty.
Thanks.
One thing for the council to keep in mind, and and this is something that we can build on in further discussions, but as you look at calls for service regarding traffic enforcement and who's initiating those. Most traffic, most traffic enforcement is going to be officer initiated. But oftentimes, it's rooted in public calls for service. So it's not necessarily, hey, there's somebody speeding down Highway one six, please respond. That would be a public initiated call for service. It's more that call, you know, from Langenberg or you know, several of the spots where we get frequent speeding. The neighbors call often in an on emergency way. They just call the department. They call the city. They email you as city counselors. And they say, people are going up and down my street at fast speeds. It's unsafe for the children to be playing on the sidewalk. Can you please do something about it? Well, the officers then respond by doing speed enforcement over the next month or or for several weeks. Those get chalked up to officer initiated traffic stops. But they are rooted in the the neighborhood complaints that came in. So those are some of the complexities of the data that that we can help sort out. And then, as the chief mentioned before, with the community service officer positions, we'd have to lay out, you know, what what can a civilian really do when it comes to traffic enforcement in Iowa? You know, we can have radar signs out. You see that where we just make the public aware. You could probably have civilians run radar operations and report back to the department on you know, what their what their findings were if they sat out there for two hours and ran radar. But there may be some limitations based on state law on on whether they could actually initiate a traffic stop and 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 issue a citation.
I was just going to add to that, Jeff. I was speaking with Denise and we get, I would estimate we get at least two traffic complaints a week. And I imagine, I know we get some from your office as well, Jeff. So just to reiterate that point, a lot of our traffic enforcement certainly. Well, I don't want to give a time of day because sometimes we do get traffic complaints at night, but certainly around schools are the result of citizen complaints.
Some of this is getting into the larger scope of the plan, but in terms of traffic incidents that are related to alcohol, I really want to make sure we're focusing on that front end prevention and diversion to and, you know, when we talk about alternatives and limitations based on the state law, I think about something like the University of Iowa Shout program, right, where these are not police officers. They don't have to operate in that way. They're not looking to issue citations, but they are actively preventing alcohol related incidents and and conflict. And so I really want us to be thinking not just like in the confines of policing, but what can we do to prevent those interactions or situations from even occurring in the first place, knowing that we have an alcohol oriented culture, especially at night, especially downtown.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that. I I did begin over the last several months, having conversations with Ryan, you know, our former student liaison on, you know, how and and perhaps in a similar way, apply this notion of self regulation to that I've been applying to to street design to you know, alcohol consumption and the abuse of alcohol is are there other ways at the front end of this? Where where we can prevent things happening subsequent to to the drinking in the bars or what have you. So I, yeah, I'm in terms of this, you know, continuum of response, I'm I'm really trying to focus my attention on the front end before it gets to the point of enforcement to see what we can do.
I just want to mention that PAWS is the partner, the Partnership for Alcohol Safety that I sit on for the council. And and that's a great partnership with the University of Iowa and many, many community different entities and agencies that are that are also partners with that. And I would agree that kind of that preventative is some of that has always been discussed here. And I think that can even be a kind of pushed a little forward for them to consider as well. Looking at what other avenues can be taken place to really do that preventative type measure. So thanks for mentioning this, Councilor Burgess.
Okay, so it sounds like eight is a future work session discussion and maybe a little bit broader than automated traffic enforcement, but maybe as a starter, just some some information that that our police department would present on traffic stops in Iowa City and just kind of give you the big picture what the stats tell us. Okay. Moving on to number nine, that is the foundation to community co response model that we're implementing. Chief, you want to give a quick update on that?
Yes, they are in the hiring process as we speak. I believe they're starting the interviews soon. So we're just waiting for them to select their person and we'll start implementing that program as soon as they do. Yeah, we're also going to be, we'll have representation during the interviews.
Okay, we're proceeding ahead with CIT training, which has been standard protocol for us for several years now. But just making sure that as we welcome new officers, be it brand new officers or certified officers that that we're investing in that CIT training for them.
Doing that as well with our non sworn staff, so the CSOs and
Number eleven is something that the department implemented earlier this year or late last year. And that's that the officers are are carrying Narcan to assist those that are having opioid overdose incidents. And I asked the chief today, and he said that our officers have had to use it about four, four times, chief. If that's that's my memory serves me correctly this morning.
Yes, since we implemented it, I think we implemented in January for we've utilized it four times. And I'm happy to report that all four of those people survived. So it's good news.
I mean, that's particularly important right now because I this 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 statistics we've been hearing about overdose deaths and the increase in overdose deaths over the last year are really heart thumping.
I agree with Councilor Weinright. This is really an important thing. And thank you, Chief, for continuing this. And and hopefully, we won't have to use it very often. But when we do need it, it's important that it's there because it does help and save lives.
All right, moving to page nine of your work session, we're on recommendation twelve. This is the implementation of the coordinate, assess, respond, engage, recording tool or the care reporting tool, which will help officers make referrals and and keep an open dialogue with our social service providers. The legislation that we were seeking unfortunately did not get did not get taken care of this year. So we'll have to try that again. But we are trying to move forward with with this as best as we can without the state legislative changes that that we really felt were needed. Chief, am I missing anything on that?
No, as Jeff mentioned, the legislation, what the legislation was going to do was help us share with more people and ensure confidentiality. That did not pass. So we're going to move forward just in a much more local manner. We've already got approval to for us and Johnson County Sheriff's Office to use it. And again, what it is, just like the acronym says, it's it's a report that will allow us to access when we're dealing with someone in crisis on past practice, things that have been successful, things that have worked. So every if if someone two years from now deals with someone that Johnson County had dealt with, and they found a certain strategy that worked well for them, that will be in that report and we'll be able to share that. Hopefully, maybe the next legislative session, we can get that passed. And that would just allow us to share it with a larger area, big with more organizations and agencies. But we are ready to move forward at the local level on that.
Okay, we do have a guide link advisory board and the police department's active in in that. Chief, anything you want to share from the from the first few months of operation on Guideline?
It has, I think we're four months, three months in now. The good news to report is the sobering unit is going to open on Wednesday. So that should be helpful as a jail alternative. We're excited about that. And as Jeff mentioned, it's not going to be until later this summer that it's it's going to be open community wide. It's still a soft opening with law enforcement. The Iowa City PD are their biggest law enforcement customer. Unfortunately, they it's an open facility, so not all of our people that we try to take there are good fits, and that's fine. But they've we've had a good partnership with Abby and really impressed with what they're doing over there. So it's been working well so far.
Okay, we very much appreciated the council's support in creating the new victim services coordinator position. We are fully staffed and and moving forward. I know, Mayor, you got to talk with Anne during one of your Community Connection episodes, which was was great to get the word out on on the services that she offers. But this is, this is definitely underway, and she is continuing to strengthen those relationships with local providers so that victims can feel connected and supported throughout the whole process. Okay, number fifteen looks at our field training program. So if you're not familiar, after an officer goes to the the State Academy, they come here to Iowa City again, whether they're a brand new officer or they're or they're coming in from another department. They go through our local field training program, which is essentially our own local orientation. And this is a really looking to bring more of the community into that process and doing some community led training through that. Really some more kind of history and education on disproportionate, disproportionate impacts of policing on minority communities, really focusing on de-escalation, which, which we already do, but really kind of just looking at that curriculum that we have with a very critical eye and making sure it's, it's balanced in the way that, that we want it to be balanced and that we're not certainly rushing anybody through that program and onto the streets by themselves. So this is something that, that the police department intends to, intends to do and would welcome your feedback and, and community feedback on as they get started in that process later this year.
Jeff, do you have community partners identified at this point as far as who will be helping with training or providing feedback or what's that process going to look like?
Yeah, and it kind of ties in with number 17 as well. That's not necessarily tied to field training program, but just training in general. I've had conversations with Black Voices Project about doing something like that. And we have done community-led training with other partners, NAACP being one that we've worked with in the past that we would really look to partner with going forward as well. But the whole, a whole myriad of, of local service agencies, United Action for Youth was one that our department recently partnered with on some training. Certainly DVIP and, and groups like that can, can really play a, an important role in, in educating our officers and helping them guide the situations they encounter to, to the most positive outcome.
I think one thing that these, some of the people that you mentioned that would be partnered with is they would offer opportunities for the officer, for officers to really hear from individuals that have a story that they want to share about their experiences and how that made them feel. And because I think that that is, is important for that to be heard and maybe that'd be a part of some of the opportunities that will come forth through some of these trainings is hearing firsthand some of those stories that officers sometimes may not even be aware of, how they may make someone feel by saying certain things. And so I think it's important to have these entities and even expanding at some point, maybe potentially to have individuals from the community that will be a part as well. But yeah, I, I, I think this is good to really have that community involvement.
Just as we were discussing earlier, the part-time position, outreach to refugee and immigrant populations, I would think that if, if at all possible, it really ought to go the other way as well because there are a lot of different people come with different cultural norms and so forth. And there needs to be a real exchange there so that, that can be beneficial both ways.
Tying it back into number four and the different, that, that was relating more to crisis referrals, but is part of this also making sure that officers are aware of places that they can help refer, divert, you know, not necessarily what the officers are doing themselves, but, but raising that awareness of resources to make those connections too?
Absolutely, that's, I mean, that's part of the field training program. As you can imagine, that's a big part of our job is referring people to the agencies that can provide the services. So absolutely, that is part of the FDO program.
Great.
And that's a, that's a prime example of what the field training program set up. For obviously, not every community is fortunate to have mobile crisis or the GuideLink Center. So when they get out of the academy, those are exactly the types of things that, that we have to educate our officers on as they go through field training. These are the resources that are available here in Iowa City. Here's how you access them. Here's when it's appropriate to access them. And this is the protocol for doing so. Sixteen is the ABLE training. Chief, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, we are actually, by the end of this week, all of our officers will have completed the training. We sent, the spring, we sent the officers away for the Train the Trainer and two officers. And now they are training the department over the course of this week. So we're happy to report that. I know this is gaining some traction across the state. I was just seeing, got some emails today from some other chiefs that are looking into this as well. So once again, Iowa City is kind of leading the, the charge on this. So, and again, for the, I think most of you are aware, but if you're not, it's, it's a, it's a peer intervention training, just like it says. And not only, as you know, we updated our general order with the duty to intervene if officers see illegal or unethical behavior, but also this not only has a focus on while it's happening, but has a focus on before it's happening, making sure officers aren't going down the wrong path. And obviously, that's key for us. We'd rather identify a problem or identify some behaviors before it becomes an issue.
Yeah, if you recall, the, the NAACP really led an effort last summer to, to bring law enforcement agencies together to enter into that memorandum of understanding, which basically said that, you know, we will intervene. This is the next step. So what the department did is it looked for the, the best training program out there, found the Georgetown Innovative Policing Program, Active Bystander Training Program, and then was able to, to get two of our officers out there. We do appreciate, you know, the NAACP not only helped us with that initial memorandum with other law enforcement agencies, but they wrote a critical letter of support to, to gain us interest, entrance into the Georgetown program. So we'll have to give a lot of the credit to them for, for supporting us at all steps through this journey. Okay, we touched on 17 a little bit. Eighteen is a civilian accreditation manager. This is just civilianizing a part of our operation that is currently staffed by a sworn position. This did not, I did not recommend this position in the budget. I do still think it's worth looking at in the future, but I didn't feel like the resources were there this year to pursue that. So this is, at least in terms of where I stand, kind of on a list with several other positions that would be nice to have, but, but not critical at this time. And if you're, I think you're all familiar with the Kalia accreditation system, but basically you have to have somebody full-time to constantly review your policies, update your policies, ensure that your practices are consistent with your policies. And if you don't have that position, you're, you're not going to continue to be certified. You're just not going to be able to keep up with all the requirements. So the, the crux of this one is should that be a sworn position? Or do we want, would we find value in bringing a civilian into that so that you have kind of a civilian set of eyes that are reviewing these policies and, and looking at compliance? And I think that could provide a lot of value. It's, it's probably not a very common model, but I think it, it could work well in the future.
Jeff, I, I agree. I think that is something in the future that we should look at. I think it would require someone who probably has some experience in it would be very helpful because the Kalia process is quite cumbersome. But right now, the person who does it for our department wears several hats. He's also our training sergeant. But that, as you know, we're trying to put things in place that'll help alleviate some of that load. And I think maybe civilianizing it in the future would be a good idea.
That kind of spills into 19, which is, we, we had on our, have on our to-do list. Many have been accomplished, 36 general orders scheduled for review this year. As a reminder, every time we review a general order and make changes, those go to the CPRB for, for a quick review before they're finally incorporated. One of the things we really like, would like to do, I'm sorry, that I would really recommend that we do is, is look at implementing some, some type of racial impact statement along with every general order that we review. We're currently trying to look at the best ways to do this and whether we need some type of help from, from other parts of the organization, be it our Human Rights Office or, or elsewhere to look at that, or whether we need some, some training within the police department. But someone to, to not only review it the, the way that we always have, but to really give a lot of intentional thought to the impact that that general order has across the spectrum of our population and look for any kind of disparate impact issues. So I think we do this informally now, but this recommendation calls for a more intentional review with an actual statement of, of finding that would be presented to the CPRB along with the actual red line policy.
Hats off to our CPRB for all the work that they've been doing. And I think that incorporating this racial impact statement would be very beneficial because it would just allow time for really an assessment to make sure that we're really meeting our goals and our standards and hopes of fulfilling our, really our mission. So I think that'd be great.
Okay, 20 is the unbiased policing ordinance. You previously adopted that. And then we did advocate for that similar language at the state level. And while the policing legislation that we expect to be, we do expect some policing legislation this year, it is not going to include the unbiased policing language that was advocated by several organizations, including the NAACP this year. So that'll have to be kicked to next year, but we'll, we'll continue to look for that. And just like we said, when you, when you adopted that earlier, this makes a lot more sense to adopt statewide than it does city by city. I'm glad we did it, but it really needs to be very clear throughout the entire state that that is the expectation and the standard. Okay, on to page 10 of your packet. This is the secondary stop policy that was put into place. It still is a temporary policy. The chief spoke to it earlier and he can answer any more questions that you have on it.
Just as to the timing on this item, it says that a final decision would be made in the fall of 2022. Are you, I mean, I'm hoping we're keeping it in place, but just assessing and collecting data during that time, we're not stopping it and then re-implementing it? Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, that's, that's absolutely correct. And, you know, I make the commitment to you and that the chief would, would certainly do the same, that we, we will not pull back on this policy without first talking with you and explaining the reasons that we're doing that. We, we realize this is of great importance to you and to the public. And so you should assume that it will continue to be in place while we're monitoring it. And if for some reason our, our perspective on it changes, you will have that opportunity to have that dialogue with us before that decision is made.
On those lines, would, would we ever consider as a city, I think I've talked about this before because the fire department does the child safety seat checks, would, would we ever be able to finance or provide maybe even the community service officers some type of safety check place, the Safety Check Village, once a month or something where folks could come and, and have their light bulbs replaced and headlights or whatever it is, those kind of little safety things that, that the city could help with?
That's a good question, Pauline. If you remember, a few years ago, Captain Brotherton implemented the bulbs program and that, that does just that. It, if we pull someone over, instead of giving them a citation, we fill that out. They take it to a couple of cooperating mechanics and they'll replace the bulb at, and they'll send us the bill. So we do do something like that already and I think it's been pretty successful. Obviously with our secondary stop, we're not pulling over people for that reason right now. But sometimes we do pull over people for a primary stop and notice that they do have bulb out or something like that. And so we still are using that program.
And I do like that.
Go ahead.
I, I do like the idea of essentially, much like the child safety seats, the, as, as Counselor Taylor mentioned, sort of a, a community relation building. Come and we'll see what, what needs to be fixed, you know, see if we can get some folks there to help fix it on, the simple things like bulbs and so forth. But that can, but can, that can be prohibitive for a lot of people.
I agree. I think not tying it to traffic stops would be helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay. Twenty-two is an issue that has been in the works for several years. As we were designing the ped mall renovation several years ago, we made sure that we had basically all the connections we needed to implement a, a, a public safety camera network in the, in the pedestrian mall, in and around the pedestrian mall. Not intended to be surveillance, but recognizing that over the years we've, we've spent significant investigative hours over some serious, pretty, several serious incidents that a camera system would help us solve. So whether it be shots fired incidents or assault incidents, we've had missing persons incidents and things of that nature. Unfortunately, when you don't have a good type of camera system, you can lose valuable time conducting hundreds of hours of, of interviews. And so we made the decision and, and previous councils budgeted for the cameras and, and we're to the point now where we can bid that project out. But we certainly also understand how sensitive this issue is when it comes to cameras in public spaces. We want to be respectful of the, of the, of the public's desire to, to understand how the department would use that camera system. So we want to present that policy to you at a work session and explain to you exactly how it will be used and explain to you exactly how it will not be used, which is active surveillance, but really an investigative tool that, that could take place after the fact. So that's just, that's on us to present to you. This is more just making you aware that we'll, we'll want you to, 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 to look at that and to help us make any final tweaks before we move forward with that installation.
And I take it that has the downtown district's support?
Yeah, I don't know if we've, we've received any kind of letter of support over the years, but certainly I would, I would fully expect that they would be supportive. They have their own camera system that, that they maintain and it's, it doesn't, it's certainly not comprehensive, but anytime that we're looking for videos right now, we'll, we'll go to the downtown district and, and, and work with them. So this would be of higher quality and have much better coverage and kind of remove them from being in charge of maintaining and being the steward of, of some of those cameras.
Wait, when you say public spaces, why are you think like, is this like on the traffic stop? Or this is something like inserting building?
Yeah, so, so this would be no, this is really an extension of the camera system that we have at our public buildings. So we have cameras in our parking decks and here at City Hall, both on the interior and exterior of the building. This would be kind of interconnected system to that network. And, and for, for right now, we're looking at just the, the pedestrian mall area. It, it could be something that could be expanded over time. I know when we, for instance, when we did the Washington Street project, we also made sure that we could add security cameras to, to the light poles if we ever wanted to. That wouldn't be necessarily in this phase one. But we could, it wouldn't be something that we would, you know, we were, this isn't a blanket the entire city type of operation, but obviously we have a lot of activity downtown. And at times we have 10,000-plus people that can be packed into. 10,000 plus people that can be packed into a couple of square blocks. And the, that's where a lot of the investigative hours are spent. So it's, it's very much kind of a a data driven, this is where, this is where the need is first and we'll, we'll, we'll see how effective it, it proves to be before we consider any type of expansion.
But have nothing to do with like traffic camera or?
No, no, it's not an enforcement. It's an investigative tool. So it would not be used to monitor or yeah, to a traffic stop or anything like that, or issuing citations.
Okay.
And that would be part of the policy we present to you again, exactly how it would be used and explicitly how it would not be used.
Jeff, do we have a policy regarding the use of the aerial camera that I assume is like the communications department? Like the quadcopter that I think Jack Brooks uses just on a similar for having policies about how we use cameras in public places and being intentional to not use them for surveillance. Can we, are we covering more than fixed cameras?
Yeah, the, the police department does not have any drone type of camera systems. You're right, our communications operation does. And I don't know if there's any policies explicitly prohibiting that use. It's not a use that we would consider right now, but whether that's written policy, I don't know. I know that there are some, some policies that they use. They obviously have to adhere to FAA, Federal Aviation Requirements. We make sure that those drone cameras stay over public property, that they don't go over private property. There's things like that, that we're very sensitive to, but I'm not sure if it explicitly bans surveillance. Something we can look at.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next two issues deal with relationships with some of your boards and commissions. The first one is CPRB. You're aware of some of the process, progress that's going on there. The chief and, and staff have had some productive dialogue with CPRB in recent meetings. There's going to be some enhancements to reports. You're already aware of some of the enhancements to reports such as the use of, use of force, monthly reports that are now provided to the CPRB. So that is definitely a work in progress. And then 24 is the Human Rights Commission and Chief Liston has met with the Human Rights Commission and will continue to kind of think about how the department can best stay plugged into their efforts. Cause I definitely feel like there's some, there's some time and that open communication would be very valuable there too. Any questions or thoughts on CPRB and Human Rights Commission relationships?
I wonder about the Truth in Arconciliation Commission. I mean, in its mandate, we talk about examples of maybe specific relationships that we know that includes specifically police, but I don't know if having some kind of consistent communication dialogue between the department and that commission, if we're also doing others.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're open to that certainly. We'll allow the, the TRC some space and at least our, our thinking was allow them some space to, to develop their, their vision, their process. And, and when, when they're ready or the time is right, we could certainly engage and, and start to build that relationship.
Yeah, I would, that's what I was going to say after Laura's comments. I, I think we need to give them the space, but make sure that they're aware that the police department is ready and willing to, you know, communicate, engage with them in whatever way they would like, but let them lead that process.
I have been in contact with, I guess, the co-chair of it in the, several times, but I, I'm with you. I kind of want them to lead that. I don't want to make them, anyone feel uncomfortable if they're not ready for our presence.
25 is, is basically getting that supporting statewide reform. And again, the reform bill has not been taken up. Could be this week or, or next week as they wrap up session, but I don't think we're going to see the type of reform that, that we set out to, that we set out to see with your legislative priorities.
Indeed, it looks more like going backwards instead of forwards at this point. We'll see what comes out of it.
26 gets at the issue of race-based calls to law enforcement. So these are calls that come into law enforcement that there, there is no apparent emergency or criminal activity. Yet it seems to be racially motivated, whether that is kind of explicit or, or not by the caller. We did not pursue this at the state level this year. Frankly, just didn't think the timing was right and the support would be there, but that doesn't mean that we can't move forward with a, a public education or awareness campaign and those sorts of things. So that's, that's something that we, we can look at particularly with a, a new communications position coming online is just kind of carefully thinking how, how best to begin to raise awareness on, on these types of issues. But certainly wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that. That could be, you know, it could be a, a controversial type of public education campaign. But one that I think is worth, worth strong consideration. So whether, whether now or later, I'd just like to make sure you're, I, I know where you stand as a collective group before we, before we go down that path.
I think one piece of information that might be helpful for council is how much discretion and Janice and I can maybe bring this question up at the JEC meeting, but you know, how much discretion do the dispatchers have when they receive a call? If it is not to their mind, an emergency to not even dispatch it. And if they do dispatch it either because they don't have that discretion or because they just do dispatch it, how much discretion do officers have based on that information to either respond or choose not to respond?
Those are definitely good issues, but I mean, I, to me, it's, it is something that, that, that needs to be at a minimum part of it. Public awareness campaign. And I think this too could eventually link in with some, depending on which way the TRC goes with, with some of their educational efforts or, or outreach to the community. So people have a better understanding of how something like that comes across or has an impact on people when, when such calls are made.
These calls, maybe I'm thinking we may have had this conversation before, but is this, do these require a response by a sworn officer? Or is this something that could be a community service officer responding to?
I guess it would depend on what the call is. Again, if it's, if it's just a completely race-based call, that certainly I think we could all agree is a, is a frivolous call at the very least. The issue and, and I think the conversation that needs to happen with the JEC is I'm sure there's some liability issues if, if someone depend, it would really depend on what, what type of call is. Don't get me wrong. I, I can imagine that they get daily calls that they do say are frivolous and might not send a unit to like. I'm just thinking off the top of my head. My child doesn't want to go to school or something like that, you know? But I will tell you that having said that out loud, I have been to some of those calls before. So I think a lot of times it's a, there may be a, a fear of liability for someone making the determination that they didn't think it was an emergency and it was just maybe a communication issue between the caller and the call taker, that they didn't understand what the situation was. So I, I, again, not being a dispatcher or a call taker, I am sure that they receive extensive amount of training, but I, I think I know other states have talked about legislation prohibiting those things specifically.
Okay. Well, we'll continue to give it some thought. I sense there's some interest there and we'll, we'll give that some thought and probably circle back with you before we initiate anything. And then for our JEC representatives, maybe we should touch base too, after you, you have the, the chance to bring it up at a future board meeting. The 27 was a, a, a kind of an exploration of a regional CPRB and I won't get into all the reasons why that could be a good idea, but it was trying to simplify things for the public, recognizing that there are multiple law enforcement agencies in a very small geographic area here in Johnson County. This is one that obviously would require some buy-in and, and work on the elected front, selected to elected peers. But I'm happy to initiate conversations with, with my, my peers. If, if this is a direction the council wants to go, but make no mistake, this is a, this is a very large undertaking and I know you're currently have a lot on your plate right now when it comes to just our own CPRB and, and making sure that it's structured in, in the most effective way possible.
I don't think there is any harm in just getting a, a sense of what other communities might be interested in, but also talking to our own CPRB members to see if they find that this would be helpful.
Would definitely be a heavy lift, but I wouldn't put it at the top of the priority list right now, but worth talking. And I also just wanted to mention, I apologize in advance, but I need to get off at 4:30.
Yeah, I would agree with Janice. I think it's a good thing to pursue, but I'm not sure it's, it, I, it is not on the top of my priority list. I think we have so many other more important things at this point to work on.
I agree. And I think some of the other communities are already looking at it on their own to develop ones. And I think tonight recently here was Corville already has one in place and Cedar Rapids was looking at it. So I think, you know, let them. And then once everybody's got theirs in place, maybe we can coordinate each, each of them.
28 is another big, heavy lift. A local public safety apprenticeship and skill building program. You can think of this as kind of a local jobs core type of program, which is becoming more common in, in large metro areas. But something that I think would hold a lot of value here, it wouldn't just be police, but we'd bring in fire, public works and really trying to engage the young adults in our community in these public service positions. Give them the, the tools and perhaps help them attain the certifications that they would need to be very successful candidates for these positions. And in the meantime, you know, allow them to, to earn some money through the apprenticeship program. Perhaps perform community outreach and service on behalf of these, these operations. So again, it's a big picture item, but recognizes that, you know, in police, fire and public works, we, we can run into significant recruitment issues and we have longstanding challenges of, of obtaining the, the diversity that, that we really seek to achieve in our, in our departments.
I, I think it's an interesting idea and I, I think I would just suggest adding public health to the scope of this, especially in that it's, I think, an area that we're seeing expanding. And so including, including that piece, I think would also be helpful.
Okay. We have initiated our recruitment process. We did make some changes to better support candidates through that process. That's number 29 there. We are probably too early to tell, but we're going to try to remain flexible and make sure that we're reaching out to as many as possible and that we're supporting them along the way with the different written and physical test initiatives.
I think we've really, as you can imagine, everywhere across the country and certainly in the state and the county are hiring right now. So it's a difficult time to recruit, but I'm confident that our community outreach assistant, Daisy Todes, has done a great job with our recruiting plan and really focusing on diversity. So I am optimistic that we're going to have some good candidates.
I wanted to circle back to the, the question of calls for service that can be handled by not sworn officers when we're looking at a challenge in recruitment and right now looking to fill positions that have been open for, you know, as I understand, a while. Certainly I know last year we had this conversation about positions being open as well. So as we're looking at recruitment and what positions we're trying to fill, Jeff, you made the comment that the, the community service officers are kind of full up, the ones who we have already are doing, are at their maximum capacity. Can we not divert some of these positions to, to additional community service officers at this stage, knowing that they can handle more calls for service?
Yeah, I think that's where we really have to review what their job description allows them to respond to. You know, we have to make sure that they're, they're appropriately compensated for the work that they're doing and, and that they have the training and background they need if we're going to expand that volume of calls for service. So over time, possible, I think we need to do that evaluation first and really think about what it means to be a community service officer, because as it sits today, may look very different than how we envision it in three or four years. And if we can ship calls for service over there and expand that staffing, that's great, but we should expect that there, there'll probably be change in those basic job duties in the classification of the position itself. And maybe even the minimum skills and qualifications that we seek.
I do think it's valuable in, in doing, conducting that research and looking at it, but we do need to be honest. I don't think there is going to be a large group of people who are going to want to respond to traditionally police-related calls as non-police officers. We, we see that currently. We've, we've been using crisis, mobile crisis outreach and they won't respond to dangerous calls. And they shouldn't because it's not safe to them. So we, we need to, it's, it's a worthwhile discussion and we certainly constantly look at ways to improve efficiency and send the best people to the calls that they can handle it. But we also have to keep in mind the safety of our employees. Again, Counselor Burgess and I have had this conversation in the past. Not all calls are that simple when they come in. That's why they come into 911. So those that we can divert, we certainly need to look at that. And it's, it's a worthwhile discussion, but we do have to understand that we have the safety of our employees to look at as well. So we, we can certainly look into that. And I, I, I do see a way where we can increase the responsibility of these people, but they, they still can't do police work. They can do things that we might not traditionally consider police work, and that's a fantastic idea, but they don't have, they, they can enforce criminal law. And, and again, they, they may not be the best people to respond to a situation that could, could turn violent. Unfortunately, those aren't always obvious. So.
Okay, 30 really looks at the officer wellbeing aspect, which, which is, there's definitely a lot of, a lot of attention being paid to that across the country right now. But making sure our officers have access to professionals who can help them through their own stresses and traumas. So that when they are on the street, they're performing at their, at their peak ability and they're not distracted for, from doing their, their best work. So we have started this. We have a fantastic peer support team in the department. Officers that, that dedicate their time to that peer support network, really, really proud of what they do. And we've got And we've got a little bit of a pilot program going here just to make sure officers have, you know, reduced, basically have reduced barriers to seek the help that they may need to process any troubles they may be having.
Just want to echo what the city manager said. It's the EMDR pilot program we're doing, I think, is going to be very positive. And then we also have officers utilizing resources that we may not know about. But the peer support group does a fantastic job and really dedicated to the well-being of the officers and I really appreciate that.
30 is a bigger concept that involves officers spending a portion of their shift time on some type of volunteer or community service type of project. We're not in a position right now with our staffing levels to be able to do that. I really don't have ideas on necessarily, you know, how this would look, even if we're at full staffing. But it's a thought that I had to really try to build some relationships at a very micro level with each individual officer as opposed to that more traditional model of having specialty positions do it or having civilian specialty positions do it, but really try to make it a focus of every officer in some way, shape or form. And again, I don't pretend to have all those answers. We'd want to sit down with the officers and have that discussion. Many of them already volunteer their time outside of work and have, you know, have shown how valuable those experiences are. So this is more of a long-term item that I'd be interested in discussing with the officers first. And then as staffing time would allow in the future, really think about encouraging this through some type of, again, on-shift allowance.
If I can just add to that as well, you mentioned it, Jeff, that many of the officers do this on their own and don't, they certainly don't pat themselves on the back about it. I find out about things third-hand of officers taking, taking kids McDonald's. You guys might know about one of our detectives taking senior pictures for students that otherwise would not have been able to get those. So I know a lot of officers do this on their own. But I agree, it's something we might need to advertise a little more that we do. They don't do it for the recognition. But if we had staffing to the levels that we'd like to, we would like to spend more time building those community relationships and just responding to calls.
32 is the communications professional position. You approved that at your last meeting. So this one is, would be shaded a different color. We're actually have posted this position. So applicants can submit on that and we hope to have somebody in place in the next month or two. One of the duties for this new position will be to really overhaul our website, particularly our police website. Make sure we're providing the information that the public's interested in, in a very easy to read and digest manner. We're not achieving that objective right now. We do have an overhaul of the website underway or the process underway. And so it's really good timing to bring in somebody from the outside in this communications position and let them work with the department to redesign the site and the content of the site from kind of a clean slate vantage point. 34, as we get to the last three here, the police data initiative is one example, but there may be others of just kind of national data reporting systems. And I think you're probably going to see these become more and more common with the focus on policing that we have in this country. But, you know, what it tries to allow you to do is for different departments to submit data to a centralized place so that people can compare data a little bit more effectively and understand the context of their local data a little bit more. I often use the example of use of force. If I told you that we had 50 use of force incidents, you know, last month, I don't know that, you know, you probably wouldn't know, is that good? Is that bad? How does that compare with other departments, other communities of our size? And there is no centralized recording. You'd have to literally call and, you know, check with Cedar Rapids and check with Corville. And then you'd have to understand the policies behind how they're reporting use of force. So really any effort to standardize, whether that's through a state-level system, a state sanction system or nonprofit think tank type of system, I think we need to look at that and really see how we can participate to not only bolster our transparency, but to better understand how our policies are influencing our actions on the street compared to another department that may have a different policy that leads to different outcomes. So the police data initiative is one that we came across last year. I think it's still growing in participation, but it's definitely one that we think that is worth participation in and we'll give that a look this coming year.
You may also be surprised to see how different agencies handle their own data. I was. I think you guys know Iowa City Police Department collects a lot of data. We provide that data to monthly use of force reports to the CPRB. That's not the standard. That's not the standard at all. So when we do look at to compare what we're doing to others, sometimes it's disappointing to find that people aren't even collecting that data and they couldn't tell you how many incidents they've had in the last year, how that compares to the years in past. In Iowa City PD, we can tell you that over decades. So we can at least compare against ourselves and I do agree. I think this is a good thing. So we could start comparing with the broader law enforcement community to see, just see how things are happening elsewhere.
One thing that I came across in looking at practices elsewhere was developing a, what was referred to as a real-time public safety community dashboard, which would be linked to GIS. So it'd be possible to view calls of service in real time. Community members would be able to view information about calls for service, you know, at a county scale or perhaps just within the city or a neighborhood. And from what I gather, this is something that has been adopted by cities. It was, where I ran across it was in a series of recommendations for Ithaca, New York. And they partnered with Thompson, Tompkins County, which I think was a mandate that was driven at the state level. But it sounded like an interesting concept. I'm always drawn, the jogger for in me is always drawn toward seeing information spatially and certainly the real-time aspect of it, I think, is pretty compelling as well.
The things I've heard about that real time is there's a real safety issue there. I would really, really want to hear from law enforcement on their thoughts because things I have read on a lot of that real-time stuff is, it's dangerous. It's dangerous for the police. It's dangerous for potential victims at the scene, just depending on what those circumstances are. So I would certainly want to have a lot more information before I would consider any kind of real-time data for people.
When I was running a fusion center, we did a lot of dashboarding, a lot of this GIS and plotting the point. And I will tell you that you guys know Officer David Swent, he works a lot in this field and there are some possibilities with that. I agree with Council MEMS, real-time calls for service could pose some problems and there might be some legal issues there. But real-time or slightly delayed, maybe day later offenses, like where we've had burglary vehicles, where we've had thefts. I think that would be very helpful and that is something we are looking at. That is possible. Like you said, there are cities that do that at the Fusion Center that I worked at. We did that. Someone could just go onto the city website and look to see where the hotspots were for assaults or thefts or whatever. And it was updated very regularly. Depending on the schedule you set up, you could do that daily. And I think there'd be great value in that.
Okay, the last two are more geared at keeping the conversation going. And in my intro letter on the preliminary plan, I said, I said, it's, you know, one of the most important aspects is we don't look at this as a finite set of recommendations, but we have mechanisms in place to develop another set of recommendations after this or to refine these, to build on them. And that's really what the last two recommendations look at. 35 is frankly inspired by the listening post that you all conducted in the fall or summer and fall last year. There's no reason we can't do that on an ongoing basis. Whether we have 400 people show up or four people show up, I think there's value to that. And I like the idea of us not doing that here at City Hall, but rotating around the community and public spaces to do that. So that's something that the chief and I will talk about this fall as things, as things open up and we're safer to be outside and in crowds. And then 36 is reconvening of the diversity roundtable that's been established for probably seven or eight years now, but has been on hiatus during COVID, is to really engage that group in a document that I found to be really, really influential in my thinking in developing this plan, which was a 2019 report from the Leadership Conference in Civil and Human Rights entitled, "The New Era of Public Safety." I encourage the council, if you haven't flipped through that report to do so. Again, it helped me think through a lot of these recommendations. And I think it would be valuable to sit down with this group that we have established a rapport with over the last short of a decade now and get their reaction because my read on it may be different and they may see some different opportunities. The police department may see some different opportunities as well. So that's something I personally want to be involved with as we get that group back together.
Well, on number 35, the town hall concept, I've long been interested in seeing that. I would simply say or suggest that I feel the representation of the city could be expanded beyond the police department and have broader representation. And perhaps city council members could be there as well. And just open it up, you know, kind of just a conversation about focused on, you know, life and wherever the town hall meeting is taking place. I think that can be really, really useful in so many different ways.
I would agree with that.
Yes, the Speak Up, Speak Out events that were held also last year along with our town hall meetings. The Speak Up, Speak Outs were really well-attended and people really opened up and gave their stories and how they've been affected by racial inequities in the community.
All right. Well, thanks to Jeff and to Chief Liston for helping us navigate those today. Wanted to offer any other comments or items that council would like to take up, address in this item on our agenda?
I'll just mention quickly something that I again ran across in the Ithaca report and recommendations. And that is looking at the organizational structure of our police department. You know, what from a workload standpoint or a performance-based standpoint might influence or suggest other ways of structuring the operation. And you may already be having these conversations, Jeff. I don't know. But insofar as we're kind of opening up this discussion, and I must say, you know, as long as certainly I've been involved in public life in Iowa City, I'd never really given much thought to the police department. You know, it was kind of just this separate entity. But, you know, I think we are having that opportunity now and it's happening nationwide. So it's sort of an interesting opportunity to see what is happening elsewhere. You know, the draft was generated quickly, you know, partly due to our own schedule. But I do think it's interesting to see how much is being generated now on this subject. So that was another aspect that I was seeing was being considered by cities and counties in terms of their police, their police departments.
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to comment a little bit. This last weekend, you all may have seen I provided a column in the Cedar Rapids Gazette talking about the possibility of, the possibility of talking about not having an armed police department in the future. And as we went through these 36 recommendations, I just want to be candid with all of you and anybody watching, that's my lens. And moving away from armed responses, I very much appreciate the good conversation that Chief Liston and Jeff Roon and I were able to have a couple of weeks ago leading into this. But I think that we made a commitment last June to restructure our police department. And what I see here is a lot of what has already been underway and already in the works and reinforcing things that we've been doing, which is great. And I think we've all learned a lot about the things we have been doing that are different from a lot of the harshest and most difficult aspects of modern policing that came under, you know, the spotlight in the last year in particular. But I really just want to challenge us to consider what did we think we were committing to last summer? And are we achieving that with this plan? And how are we going to measure that? I think for myself, the goalpost is, you know, established. It's pretty far out there. But I really want us to be looking at how else are we moving away from armed response to emergency situations? We've identified here today a lot of chicken and egg issues, right? We need 911 integration. We need to increase mobile crisis. We need to have maybe more community service officers, but we need to evaluate those positions first and see what all they may be able to do. We need to educate the public so they understand what calling for an emergency response might be. But right now there aren't a whole lot of alternatives to police. So why are they going to call? I mean, there's just a lot we need to try and wrap our arms around. And so I guess I just wanted to push on that a little bit and just really let you all know where I was coming from and hope that we can continue this conversation in an open way. And also as we continue to get input from the public on this plan, there aren't a whole lot of things that need our continued input here on these 36 recommendations. And so I think we just need to ask ourselves, what are we asking from the community as far as additional input? What direction are we looking to go? And how are we going to, how are we going to measure that going forward?
I would just comment since you brought it up, Laura, I read your article and I guess I just want to put out there publicly and I think I'm going to write a response to it because I think it's really important. I am, I guess, diametrically opposed to your position. And I say this with all due respect because I've just really, you know, you and I have really gotten to know each other over the last 16 months. You've been on council. We've worked together on a lot of things and I have a great deal of respect for you. But on this particular issue of even, I guess, really even entertaining the idea of abolishing the police department. Yeah, you and I are on opposite ends of the pole with that one. I think you knew that from when we talked before you wrote the article. From my perspective, human nature is such that we can never be without a police force. Now, I am absolutely and totally open to the discussions we're having and other suggestions and ideas. and ideas that people can bring forth on how we, you know, reduce the number of calls for service or reduce the calls that have to be responded to by armed officers while maintaining the safety of the public and those people responding to those calls. So I'm, I'm totally open to innovation. I'm totally supportive of more training. I'm totally supportive of holding officers accountable when they do not act in a way that is, is appropriate or safe or respectful of the community. But to me, the human nature is such that if we go to that idea of an abolition of a police department, I, I don't know if all of you read the very, very, I think, the longest email I've ever received in the eleven plus years I've been on council. I think it was from Mr. Thompson. He talked about, you know, in the absence of power, you have a vacuum, somebody will fill that. And to me, the idea of abolishing an armed police force does just that, creates that type of vacuum. So to me, even putting the word abolition out there related to the police force raises, I don't know, maybe an expectation or a thought process that is very different for people. But to me, it's a very unequivocal word. It means getting rid of. And I am not at all supportive of getting rid of a police department. I am totally supportive of reimagining, restructuring and holding accountable what I believe is already a very, very good, very professional force, not without fault, but very good. And I want to make sure, Chief Liston, that as you go back to your staff, I would appreciate that you take that message back to them.
I agree with Councilor Memm's and and with all due respect, Councilor Burgess, I, I looked up the definition of abolish and, and it, as Susan alluded to, is put an end to, do away with something completely. And that just seems very extreme to me. And I, I thought more about, and I, I looked up rethink and redirect is what I kind of have in mind. And and that's just to think again about something, especially in order to make changes to it, which is what we're looking at now, or reassessment to result in changes being made. And one of the changes, I think, that was brought out from everything last summer and and since that time is, is the need for more of of mental health response team was the cahoots team was referred to an awful lot. And we only had just that community on call community crisis team that that was limited in the numbers they had and and what they could do. And I think we're looking at expanding on that and and that's very positive. I I like that because also, as I'd sort of alluded to and asked that question earlier, I think our current nine one one system is, is kind of a one size fits all solution. And so I'm happy to see that we're looking at expanding on that and and making that a better resource, because as Councilor Memm sort of alluded to, I mean, people are people. There are individuals out there and we do have to hold them accountable. And there are those who may press the laws and and cause harm to others. And and in that case, we, I believe we do need some law enforcement officials that that can handle those kinds of safety situations.
The word abolish, I, we've heard the definition. And my, my issue with the word abolish is the general public certainly don't know, many, many other people that I've talked to about abolish the police, they certainly don't know what that could mean. They don't know that it can mean a re, a reduction in the number of police officers or a reduction in the number of, of, of things that the police do. I think the word abolish, in its truest meaning, mean to end. And so even right now, Councilor Burgess, and sorry to, you know, direct this to you, but I, I feel it's important for me to speak to this. But the word abolish that you're suggesting that you just ended with was actually to end the police department, if if I understand correctly. And so I, I do believe that what I committed to and what the council committed to, when we looked at the words that we wanted to use for this plan, we, we took considerable time talking about abolish and some other terms, and we went with restructuring. And so I am not at all in agreement with the using utilizing the word abolish. Now, in the process, could there be some duties or some, you know, things that they're doing that might be abolished that has actually transitioned somewhere else? It's restructuring. So the word abolish for me, I think, is very dangerous. And I think not only for us locally, but statewide, if we really want to create the change that we need, we have people responding to that word negatively. Now, when I look at the word and 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 I know what abolish mean, abolish can mean a lot of things. It can mean, you know, the reduction. When it comes down to police abolition, people have different terminology. But I think, again, the general public hears that word and I think is very misleading. And quite honestly, it's, we certainly can make it, we can do a lot and will do a lot to make our police department what we want it to be for our community. And we're going to have community involvement in this process to make sure that we're getting what we need. So for me, the word abolish, I am not willing to put a part of this process. But respectfully, I think you know that. Well, here and no more comments or thoughts for today. I want to bring, oh, sorry.
I guess for me, the abolishing the police and the meaning that I, I, as you said, Mayor, this is could have a lot of meaning. But for me, really, it doesn't mean that we, like, really get rid of the police. I, I think police is needed in many ways. But it means, for me, it means like reduction, it's mean like, you know, like direct some fund to something else instead of like reducing the funding for the police. That was, I believe, we should consider somehow, because we have a lot of hole in a lot of things. And I, I believe that it is, the, the fund for the police is really high. And that doesn't mean, so I'm going to repeat it again, doesn't mean get rid of the police for me. But it mean a lot of another thing that we have to consider. You know, and 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 value and just like we did the, the, if we, whether we have, we need all this fun just to go and to have like police, like officer, or we need to direct some fund to something else.
I, I just want to make one additional comment, and that is, and Counselor Taylor said this, look up the actual definition of the word abolish. It does not mean to reduce. It does not mean to defund. As Counselor Taylor said, and I've got it up again, the definition is to do away with completely, to put an end to. And so for me, with that being the definition of abolish, I think it is totally inappropriate for anybody to use it unless they believe in the meaning and using that word in its meaning to get away, to do away with our police department. If you're thinking anything else, restructuring, defunding, changing budget, you should not use the word abolish, because that's not what it means. Abolish means to get rid of the police department. So I think it's important that everybody work with the definition of the word, not create their own definition.
I think we made it clear in our, in our seventeen point, I, we said restructure of the police department. And we should go what we, about what we said, what we mean by restructure. You know, but if you want, you don't want to use the word, but it's still, you understand the concept of like, when we said restructure the police department, we don't have to use the word. The word is, doesn't matter right now. We just really need to do something about this, about restructuring our police department.
All right, well, I want to thank the counselors for your time today. And we will, of course, not, this won't be the end of this conversation, we'll continue. Thanks and have a good evening.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but one last thing.
Yeah.
For somehow, I, I have a problem with my email, I have to go to the city and fix it. But do we have any input right now from the public that you send it to us? I, I miss it or anything, because I was looking up input from the public for somehow I didn't find it.
Yeah, I can respond to that, Mayor, if you, if you'd like. We, we have input that's been, that was submitted through our website that that we can share with you. Most of that was gathered in the early part of two thousand and twenty one, when the plan first came out and was published on the site. We have been exploring some in person public outreach with community partners. And we fully expect to move forward with that this summer, when we can more safely gather outside. This conversation here will help kind of focus in on particular elements of the plan that that may be worth kind of targeting for public input. But there will also be kind of that open ended, what, what else do you want to see? What, what else are your thoughts when it comes to the Iowa City Police Department? So that is a, a part of it. We were holding website comments to combine with the in person comments, but if you'd like to see those sooner, I'd be, we'd be happy to compile those in in some digestible manner and get those out to you.
No, I guess like, for me, they important, the people who go to the website is the people who come to the council, is the people who do all that. I really looking forward to see the input from the people of color. You know, and if there's something not been done yet, that's no problem. I still, I, I know that you said we just won, like, maybe during the summer, everybody get vaccinated and we can have those event. There is no problem. But I'm, I, I, those really important for me.
Great, sound like we'll get that in some fashion compiled. So thank you, Jeff, for granting that to us. And anything else before we end our time here today?
No, I promise I don't have anything. Thanks.
Thanks again, and have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
Yeah. Bye.